It is 6:20. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We'll start off with Roca.
Alga Benavides present.
Esmeralda Solis present.
Nerida Cantú present.
Mary Hernández present.
Roberto Zamora present.
And Alex Cantú present. I do declare a quorum. We'll stand up for their pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will we please remain standing for 30 seconds of silence, please? Thank you. At this time, we're going to move on to public comments. We only have Mr. Jerry Munoz, our attorney, that's going to address us with some public comments.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Good afternoon. As you know, two district employees were arrested today by the Texas Department of Public Safety. The arrests were impartially response to one of the employees' actions of self-reporting their actions concerning 58 school buses and their vehicle safety inspection certificates. The matter was initially brought to the attention of one of our district administrators. In response, the district administrator directed the employee to communicate with representatives of the Texas Department of Public Safety and report the behavior. Our district administrator further initiated an internal affairs investigation to determine who was involved and what action was taken. Since the matter involved possible criminal activity, our internal affairs agency did not communicate any facts or confirm any investigation to any member of the Board of Trustees. During the course of today's investigation, it was determined by state law enforcement officials that district employee Jose Luz Alanís, Assistant Director of Transportation, had not, I repeat, had not engaged in any criminal activity or action. The arrest warrant and all charging documents listing him as a party were withdrawn by the arresting agency, and Mr. Jose Luz Alanís was excused from any criminal or civil liability. Those facts were confirmed by the district's own internal investigation. All district reports, summaries, and emails were tendered to the investigating agencies. To further clarify the matter, district officials and administration have confirmed that all 58 vehicles in question have in fact been inspected and cleared for safety and use by district and employees and students. In conclusion, today's incident involved a single employee, a data entry clerk, who self-reported to the district administration and followed all district directive to self-report to any necessary law enforcement agency. Thank you.
Okay, that concludes our public comments, but before we move on, I know I see people, teachers and staff from Ann Richards Middle School. If you all want to stick around, but ultimately you are going to get some good news afterwards, so don't worry. With that being said, we move on to item number five, work session, Board Workshop, Good Governance Practice.
Mr. President, members of the board, once again we have Mo Casey, Dr. Greg Gibson, ready to move forward with our initiative and our accountability wall-to-wall effort to establish a student-focused, data-driven, and results-oriented atmosphere and learning climate. Dr. Gibson, welcome to La Jolla ISD.
Thank you. Glad to be here. I live 8 hours and 20 minutes, almost due north of here, and the temperature, my wife just sent me a selfie, it's 75 degrees on our back porch, so it is possible to not have 110 at 8:00 p.m. And I don't think you all got this one, but I think you're supposed to get the next front. It's supposed to come all the way. Probably wasn't the best way for me to start to rub it in that I'm headed home tonight to a jacket for the first time. I think we're finally going to have some fall weather. I keep hearing that this El Nino thing is supposed to occur, and I'm ready for it. So, Mr. Gonzalez and President, Mr. President, I'm so happy to report tonight that we're ready to show the board a first draft of the balance scorecard. We've been talking about that. So you have a packet, and I'll be referring to tab one, tab two, and tab three as we move through this. Just in way of expectations, we're happy. I've been working closely with your cabinet members, and I think we're happy to answer any question that you may have. But, Mr. President, I'm also prepared for this to be about an hour overview, and then just see if you have any questions. We don't need to belabor this. I would rather us make a presentation that kind of gets to the salient points and then see if you have questions, if that's okay, and not belabor it.
That'd be great.
So, without further ado, I want to give you a few reminders. The scorecard, in some ways, is like a compass. I like to refer to it as a compass. Because we may get in the wind, and we may get in the fog, and we may get in the rain, but we can always look at a compass and know where north is, and if we know where we're going, then we can find our way. The scorecard, to me, is the compass for our school district. It's the agreed-upon strategic objectives that the administrative team agree and the board have had back-and-forth conversation, and in essence is our true north. And so tonight, this is presented as a draft. We had a little talk before, like, when is it ready for board adoption? And, Mr. President, what we concluded, it's ready for board adoption when the board is ready to adopt it. So that was earth-shattering, but yet we want tonight to see what questions you may have and what tweaks you may recommend. I also want to remind everyone that tonight is the culmination. I think I've been here four times, maybe now, I think, and maybe not four with the board, but the board has taken a Team Trust self-analysis. The board has taken a Good Governance Inventory. I'm going to hold it up to remind the board of what the Good Governance Inventory is. The board has conducted a SWOT analysis, which was a great exercise that started this, and we've had several conversations about the scorecard basis. And all to say, trustees, I just want to make sure you know that I'm qualified and certified to give you your Team of Eight credit and your EISO, which is evaluating and improving student outcomes. And you've actually, Mr. Gonzalez, they've more than exceeded that at this point. So anytime you all are ready for the certifications, I can make it happen by phone tonight if you're ready for that.
That's wonderful.
And I just wanted to remind trustees, you are getting credit, and we are going to make sure that we get those checked off. Without further ado, if you look at tab one, I'm going to get you to toggle back and forth between tab one and tab two. So the board on tab one is what we may refer to, or I may refer to, as the board version or the basic scorecard. And so there's your vision, district beliefs, mission, and priorities. Then if you'll notice, we have four priorities: student success, recruit, retain, and grow all staff; priority three, quality service and impactful engagement; and priority four, effective and efficient district and campus operations. And then in each of those four priorities, we have, well, in the first one, we have four strategic objectives. And then in priority two, we have three; priority three, we have two; and then priority four, we have three. Mr. President, this document, and, Mr. Gonzalez, this would actually be, when the board is ready, what the board would adopt. I just want to be clear. You're adopting the mission, the vision, the four priorities, and the strategic objectives. Now, if you'll toggle back to the second tab, so what I may call tonight, the board version, and then the leadership team version, or the tactical team version. If you remember, we talked about the strategic team versus the tactical team. So the tab one is the strategic team version; tab two is the tactical team version. And if you'll notice, the yellow stays the same, and then the priority one is the same. And then your 1.1 on the strategic or the board one, improve student achievement, it's the same. But then you'll see, when we move to column three, and column four, and column five, we're getting deeper into the actions and then the lead measures. In other words, how do we know that that action is working along the way? And then we're getting to the outcome measures of what's the big number we're trying to move at the end of the year. And then feel free, trustees, at this time, start tabbing through tab two. And just start, and I don't mean we're not going to read it, and that's part of, I'm not going to read to you tonight. I know you all are quite capable of going through this. But if you notice, that one-page document that's in tab one, do we know how many pages this is now, current draft? 10, probably. It feels like 10. I'm feeling it right now. But that one-page board document is actually about a 10-page overview of this key work aligning to the strategic priorities that the board, hopefully in the next couple of board meetings, is ready to adopt. I'm going to pause right there and just let you kind of thumb through it. Is that making sense to everybody? We're just getting a little deeper, right? The tab two is just getting a little deeper into the actions. Now, I don't want to bore everybody to death, because I nerd out on scorecards. I've told you all that before. But I want to talk for just a moment, because if I'm a trustee, I may be thinking, well, wait a minute. This isn't everything that we do in the district. And that's a true statement. But column three, these key strategic actions on the scorecard, and there's probably 30 to 35 of them on here, that's the primary work that the board should be paying attention to: funding, evaluating, and constantly monitoring. In the Education Code, the board, I mean, the Education Code states that the Board of Trustees, one of their primary responsibilities is the oversight of management. Well, what I'm saying to you is, column three is what you're overseeing. Those key strategic actions is what the board is overseeing. Now let me pause for just a second. And, Mr. President, I want to make sure that there are no questions so far before I delve a little bit deeper.
You're referring to the 1.1A, 1.1B?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. That's a good way to look at it. So see, those are the key strategic actions that line up to your 1.1. And so the board is not adopting those actions, but the board is monitoring those actions through monthly reports.
So these are the things that we should be expecting reports to us?
That's correct. That's a great way to say it. Thank you, ma'am. Column three is what you should expect reports on. Column four is the data that we're telling you, that trustees, you should see data lining up. Column four is kind of a list of the data that should be being used during those board reports, if that makes sense.
So did I understand this correctly, that at every board meeting, we should be discussing academic student outcomes?
Yeah. So there's a couple of, this is any way the board wants to do it, and it's probably the next conversation, once the scorecard is adopted. Some districts will take, I'm just going to use examples here, but she's right on point for the next conversation. So they'll take September, and by the way, I didn't say earlier, you just reminded me, your House Bill III goals, they're all embedded in your 1.1 and your 1.2, if that makes sense. I should have said that earlier, but just so you all know, those are embedded in 1.1 and 1.2.
And those House Bill III goals still the same, the math, I mean, the reading for early childhood, and then the CCMR and the math?
Correct. And, Mr. Munoz, I think it's going to kind of touch on that. I'm probably stealing a little bit of his presentation, sorry, but yes, ma'am, they're embedded in that. So, and, Mr. President, if I might, and we're going to jump to, the admin team's going to make some quick presentations. It's really the board's discretion. Some districts, I just left a district, that what they've decided to do is September, they want to hear a priority one report; October, a priority two report; November, a priority three report; December, a priority four report. So in the fall semester, they've gone through the whole scorecard, if that makes sense. Then turn right around and do it again, January, February, March, April. And then the board has gone through the whole scorecard again in the spring. That could be one way. Another way is you break priority one into some pieces. And so you hear a piece of priority one every meeting, because that's student achievement, and then you hear a piece of priority two. So it's just like a piece of priority one, and then priority two, and then a piece of priority one the next month, and priority three, and then a piece of priority one the next month.
So do we decide that as board members, or does administration decide that?
Well, I think the administration is open to whatever structure that suits the board. We would just like it to be that you reach consensus on what's the most appropriate protocol for you all.
I think it should be a collaboration, our feedback, and then from there, do our objectives, and then move forward with those. But I think the board should be part of it.
Then, in fact, I'll speak for, like, we've talked about any scenario. They're ready for whatever the board desires. We do want it to, whatever the timeline that's decided, we desire for it to be go through the whole scorecard in the fall, go through the whole scorecard in the spring. Like, that should be the cycle. However we get there, we think that. And one of the main reasons, and, Mr. Munoz, will touch on this, like, with the academic data, especially early in the spring semester, we have a lot of middle-of-the-year or MOY data, a lot of MOY data. So that's a good time to share with the board where we are in the middle of the year. Thank you. Those are great questions.
Well, and because we have a lot of schools, it's, I don't know, but in my opinion, it almost behooves us to break it into academic and then the number two. Because the number two, which is recruit, retain, and grow, yes, it's important, but academics is so much when you just talk about third grade, or when you just talk about eighth grade, or...
Yeah, so one, there's a district in the Corpus area that I'm working with that they're giving, in the middle of the year, and, Mr. Munoz, don't panic, I don't think I've ever said this to you, but in the middle of the year, they're giving a real high-level overview at the February board meeting. And then that board wants a workshop in February just on priority one, because there's just so much data. And so they're coming into a workshop setting. So they did the kind of broader one at the board meeting for the community to see, and then they're running through the other metrics at the middle of the year. I did not make that recommendation to them, but they called, "Is this okay?", and I went, "That's a really good idea. I'm going to start sharing that." You don't have to do it every month, but there's times of the year, especially middle of the year with your academic data, there's a lot of data to share. And just to keep this real practical, like, last night I was in Medina Valley, and actually it was today at lunch in Flower Bluff. They decided that they wanted them to be 20-minute presentations at the first of the board meeting. And it's kind of like Stephen Covey's First Things First. Like, before we get into the rest of the business of the night, we want to have our scorecard report. So they say the pledges, they do student recognition, and then they run right into their scorecard report for the first 15 or 20 minutes. And that's the real high-level one, and then some time for the board to ask questions. And, Mr. Gonzalez, I know, like, we talked about, in very practical terms today at lunch, the board was saying they wanted to make a commitment to keep it to that amount, and if they wanted to go deeper, we would put it on a future agenda item, or we would do a workshop, if that makes sense. Okay, we kind of jumped ahead, but thank you for the prompt, but yes, that's the next step. All right, if every trustee, I would like you to just, like, if there's any questions about kind of how tab two works, does it make sense to you now? This is a draft. I would say columns one and two are pretty near final. Columns three, four, and five are a work in progress right now. There was a brief discussion about, like, it's not finished enough to show the board, I'm just telling you all. And it's like, we just will show, I mean, we decided, like, let's show what we have as of this point. Even when, Mr. President, when the board adopts this first version, I would hope that trustees, if something needs to change in column three, that you say, "Change it and make it work", but just tell us on the next report what you changed and what your data, to support what the change was. And so this document, the one that you would ultimately adopt, is, I would call this near final. Tab two will be a work in progress this whole coming year, if that makes sense. Even once the report started, there's going to be learning. I hear them already. Like, we wrote it this way the first time, but then we talked to our staff, and someone had a really good idea, and now we think it would be better this way, or we thought about that campus. And so I would assume you all would want them to have the agility to make those changes and then just keep you updated on what those changes are. All right. Yes, sir.
As we move forward... Let me see, you can hear me now?
Yeah, I can hear you now.
So as we move forward, will there be means for us to know resources required, funding required, people responsible, et cetera, to where we would be able to see what's the financial implications for what we have here?
Absolutely. And two things come to mind, great question. One is that you have, one of your priority four strategic actions is really related to the strategic allocation of resources. But most of the districts are using, during the budget process, they're using column two as the baseline for their analysis on the budget. And it's almost like, are we fully funding 1.1? If we're not completely funding that, what else would we need? And then I think, Mr. Gonzalez, like this, that I would always ask the question, if we're adding money to 1.3, what are we strategically abandoning to take away to move it over there? But yes, sir, the column two, what you adopt, should be your first thing that you think about in budget development, in my opinion.
And this might be a question for staff here. I know that previously in our district improvement plans and the long-range plans, we did have identified what were not only the funding sources, like Title I, whatever the funding source may be and the amounts and person responsible. So I'm just wondering where within this document that would be, because that document in the district improvement plan does have that.
Yeah, very good. I think that this is going to work in tandem with your district improvement plan. Our goal is to make it clearer for us and clearer for you. I can envision, we're just thinking out loud right now, so that's dangerous, but we're just thinking out loud. But I could envision a document that shows all the way over through column three, key strategic actions, and it's like a budget analysis, and we're saying, what's fully funded? What do we feel like is underfunding? What are the funding sources, like, all sources in? And then the far-right column could be, you know, where do we perceive that we need to add funding? And where can we find some funding to help add another funding? So the scorecard could become the basis of your budget planning. It could also become the basis of your superintendent appraisal instrument very easily. That's very common, and you all may already have one. I haven't really talked to Mr. Gonzalez yet, but it could easily become the basis for a superintendent appraisal instrument. If someone says, "What are the board goals?", you just go to the scorecard. If they say, "What are the superintendent goals?", you just go to the scorecard. If they say, "What are the district goals?", you just go to the scorecard. That's the purpose of this, to try to get, I don't know if you all remember, the arrows going in different directions one of the first meetings, this is trying to get the arrows aligned. Thank you, sir. That's a great question, and it should form the basis for studying the budget.
Because what we're seeing here, and that's the purpose of the scorecard, and that is, what are we going to do, and how are we going to know we did it?
That's correct.
That's basically what's here.
That is exactly right. And a little bit of, when do we expect it to be done?
So then with the priority areas, what I was looking at is, so just organizationally, how we're organized. Typically, I think the district goals have, we have four goals or so, and there's a goal for each one of the major departments. So I was looking here, and student success would be one with curriculum and instruction. Then we have the human resources with the recruitment, retention, and growth of all staff. Then the next one would be student services. And somehow, the student services here is a little bit lacking. I'm just thinking. And then we get into the facilities and operations.
Yeah, the blue we've talked about, I think that's almost like a group effort with a lot of different folks: public relations, communications, community relations. The blues are owned by a lot of groups.
But I just want to make sure that each one of the major departments really has some priority areas and that we do have a means for looking at what they're doing and have some measures for them also.
Yeah, the division of labor for the four senior leaders to my right falls, with the exception of the blue area, almost along the lines of these four priorities, if you think about it.
And they're all cut across for curriculum and instruction and academics, student outcomes.
Right, and I realize that structure, and I think that's a great decision, and I support that structure. There's expertise on those three that really line up to the scorecard. I'll give you a really practical example. We were dividing up the presentation tonight, and it was just real simple, who's doing one, who's doing two, who's doing three, and who's doing four. That tells you, it's like it's well-aligned, because it was just real logical. Okay, speaking of which, we're not going to read to you all of tab two, but we're going to start with Mr. Munoz, and he's going to give an example of how 1.1 works all the way across. And just two or three minutes, just as fast as we can run through it, and then we'll see if there's questions. And we're going to give an example out of priority two, an example out of priority three, and an example out of priority four, and then we'll see if there are any questions. Mr. Munoz.
Thank you, Dr. Gibson. Good evening, Mr. Board President, and Mr. Alex Cantú, Mr. Superintendent, Mr. Gonzalez, ladies and gentlemen of the board, community, distinguished guests. So like Dr. Gibson said, this is our scorecard. This is what we're going to leverage to improve our district. There are four priorities. Priority one, the one that we wanted to give a priority focus to, would be student success. And you can see it there in the first column. Now, under this priority focus, we have four strategic objectives or goals that, like Dr. Gibson mentioned, that is what you as a board will oversee. You're going to be getting reports on these strategic objectives or goals and data to monitor our progress towards attainment. So under the four strategic objectives or goals that we have under priority focus, we have that we're going to improve student achievement, that we're going to improve college career military readiness, that we're going to provide safe and engaging schools for our students and staff, and that we're going to enhance innovation and increase competitiveness when it comes to recruiting and retaining our students. Now, these objectives are goals that are measurable and actionable, proven to improve student achievement. So one strategic action that we're going to leverage to improve student achievement, you can see it there under 1.1A, and that is that we're going to enhance instructional practices through monitoring and providing feedback on the implementation of district curriculum and the research-based instructional strategies. And so we're going to do this action to again improve student achievement. So we're going to make sure that our teachers and staff have quality curriculum and that we monitor the implementation of it, and that we monitor the use of best practices. Now, how are we going to measure it? What data are we going to bring to you to let you know in regards to the implementation of it? Well, you can see it there under Progress Measure 1.1A. We're going to evaluate walk-through data to ensure administrators are providing regular and constructive feedback to teachers on the implementation of district curriculum and on the implementation of research-based instructional strategies. So our administrators are going to be visiting classrooms. They're going to be providing feedback to our teachers. They're going to be documenting that feedback. And as the district, under our walk-through protocols, we have it as a goal that administrators are going to visit at least 15, conduct 15 walk-throughs per week. That is something that we can track. So when the board chooses and lets us know in regards to the calendar of presentations that you would like to see, this is a report that we're going to be able to share with you, the number of walk-throughs that our administrators are conducting across the district and by campus. And ultimately, the long-term measure or goal that we would like to accomplish, you'll see it in the last column, right? The SMART goal, we're going to go from X to Y by Z by a certain time period. So by June of 2028, our Domain One, our student achievement goal, will increase from X, which will be August. X, which will be August of 2023, to Y, which will then be May of 2028. So that's one strategic action that we're going to leverage to improve student achievement. We have two additional ones, but we just wanted to give you an example of how this scorecard is going to be moving us forward when it comes to improving student achievement.
And what you've just shared there on that page, what is it that's different from what is currently happening?
We are currently doing that one, Dr. Samora. The difference will be that you as a board are going to be getting that data as well, and we're going to be tracking student performance and leveraging whether, how successful we are in regards to the implementation of that one action item.
But you've been tracking student performance?
That is correct, Dr. Gonzalez. And we've been tracking teacher or principal walkthrough information. That activity, though, is not one that we've shared with you in the past.
Those are great questions, and if I, as a superintendent, oh, your release. He's ready to sit down. As a superintendent, I, the preparation for the board report the next month, I viewed as my cadence of accountability to the team that was their cadence of accountability to their team. Is that making sense? So one of these four is asking for the data to be ready for next month's board meeting. So they're having a meeting, and then the cabinet's having a meeting, and then they're meeting with maybe the superintendent's not at the first one, then the superintendent's at the next one to hear the report that's going to the board. All that is what I like to refer to as benevolent stress. So it's stress, but it's stress in the sense that it's good. Benevolent means good, because it's, it's accountability for all of us. And I, the cycle, it's not like curriculum's on point every single month, like you, you need time to go work. But when you give your part of the scorecard report, that's an accountability system, and you're, you're a large organization. So there's a lot of people, you know, that kind of have to cascade up. So I love the question that started this, because in that particular case, it's not new, new actions, right? It's just the reporting mechanism to you. And I want to go out on a limb, and I bet the data, when it goes to the board for a report, is really tight. Follow what I'm saying? Whereas if we were in a meeting with staff members, I don't mean your La Jolla ISD, just in general, we might, you know, say, ah, it's close, you know, that's pretty close, you know, or whatever. But like when it's, that's, you know, you have the position of a trustee to say, what's the report? So this kind of bakes it into the system, you know, that we're going to get the data and we're going to get it right, you know? Now, I want to make sure I say two things before I move on to two. One is, and trustees, this is really important, I'm going to make a guess here, if something is not going the way that they want it to go, you would rather know that in March than in August or July. Now, I see heads nodding. So is that a fair?
Definitely.
Okay, and does everybody follow what I'm saying? Like no surprises in July and August. So that means that during the year, there has to be a comfort level with the two teams here to say, third grade math, something's, something's not where we want it to be, right? There has to be the trust to say, it's not where we want it to be. Because I feel, I feel like it's really important to not surprise board members in the summer. Like I, I feel as strongly about that as anything else. So I see some heads nodding, so I'm taking that as, you, you would agree with that. So that's part of what this process is. If you will, if you'll notice 1.4, real quickly before we move to Priority Two, I think Dr. King, he was originally maybe coming tonight, and then he wasn't able to come tonight, and that's, he's got other obligations. But Dr. King is part of the team working on 1.4. To my knowledge, you're the only district in the state of Texas that has a strategic objective that specifically addresses innovation and your desire to be more competitive in the market. School has become competitive. There are, kids can stay home, they can do it online, they can go to a building down the road. You get what I'm saying? And so I think for you, I think it's very, very, very forward-thinking for you to have a strategic objective surrounding innovative partnerships. And we're not going to steal Dr. King's thunder. I think we're going to let him come to the next meeting and talk to you about 1.4. Is that what we decided? I think that's, yeah. As we talked about earlier, Priority Two is your staff component, and so Dr. Villarreal is taking the lead on Priority Two, recruit, retain, and grow all staff.
Thank you, Greg.
So are you leaving 1.4 now? Are you leaving 1.4, or are you going to come back to that?
We're going to come back to it. Dr. King can be here tonight, so we're going to come back to it at the next meeting, I think is what.
That's correct.
Because I would just ask that we have some in-depth discussion about the collaborative partnerships as per 1882.
And I think that's-
And what that means for the district, what it means in terms of governance, et cetera.
And Dr. King has a high level of expertise, so I think that's why we wanted to make sure he was here as well.
Yes, he will be here the 20th and the 27th, so he's available next week and the following. So there'll be an in-depth discussion. He'll bring his staff, and he will wholeheartedly present the options, you know, at the table, and the benefit, the challenges, the implications within cost or even administrative allocations, all that will be presented to the board.
Okay, good afternoon, Mr. President, Mr. Gonzalez, for trustees and community. We recognize that our staff are our most valuable asset here in our district, and we are dedicated for fostering an environment that not only attracts top talent, but also nurtures their professional and personal growth. Therefore, our Priority Two is recruit, retain, and grow all staff. And if we look at 2.1, as you can see, we have 2.1A, and that in itself for us, we have that it is strategically expands relationships with university, colleges, and alternative certification programs to assist and recruit highly quality talent. If we look at the progress measure here, as you can see right there, what we're looking at is attending scheduled meetings, which also includes participating in universities starting in the beginning of the year. But one of the things that we're looking at as well is that here in the district, we have over 172 instructional assistants that already have a bachelor's and working with Project PACE. We could all be focusing on them if they want to, that way we could go ahead and fill some of the positions that we have in special ed, or focus on getting them certified in, through the bilingual program as well. So that's just an example. We would be doing the progress measure with these particular individuals, trying to get them certified. And if we look at the long-term measure, we're talking about, and keep in mind that this is a draft, right? Keep in mind that we're looking at decreasing the number of vacancies in special ed and the bilingual program to 80% compared to the previous year in 2023, at the end of the year in itself. Now, as you know, under the objectives, not only do we have 2.1, we also have 2.2 and 2.3. 2.2 is capacity building of all staff at all levels, and we also have 2.3, which is employee satisfaction and alignment of strategic objectives. Okay. Any questions that you all might have?
Not a question, just a reminder, I had asked for the list of vacancies per campus at, I think, two board meetings ago, so I'd like to have that.
That's correct. I know that you requested it at the last board meeting, and we said that we would give you the list at the next board meeting, and we, we have it ready.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
This is a work session, and so it's not on the agenda, but we have prepared that for you at the next board meeting.
No, I had just asked for it to be sent to me at two board meetings ago.
Okay. So yes, we have it ready. We could send it to you if you'd like, or give it to you at the next board meeting.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay, thank you.
Well, in that question, you know, it, it could be that, sorry, I'm supposed to lean in. It could be that, I'm not saying it needs to be, but this is a good example. It could be that the leading measure could be that the board has a dashboard of the percent of vacancies at each campus.
Yeah.
Like where, that's, that's, that's where this kind of work hits.
Right.
We start, we start zeroing in on what feels like the right way to measure it, and then it's just part of the board's dashboard of progress. I, I'm just giving that as one example. I also thought of one more thing before Dr. Villarreal leaves. So I should have said this in the way of introduction, Priority Two and Priority Three are going to rely pretty heavily, to some extent, on survey data, if that makes sense. Because we're talking about staff satisfaction engagement, we're talking about community satisfaction engagement. So the, your team is working on a nice, I've seen a draft of surveys, and so that would be something that the board would be looking at, or like these surveys that they'll be using district-wide. Then you get the data report back on the results of those. I think they're good.
Thank you.
Mr. Garcia is going to cover the blue section, which is Priority Three, which is quality service and impactful engagement.
Good evening, Mr. President, Alex Cantu, Mr. Gonzalez, Superintendent of Schools, esteemed board members and fellow colleagues and community in the audience. In our educational philosophy, we firmly believe that student success is intertwined with our parents' invaluable partnership. By providing quality service and fostering impactful engagement, we aim to create a school environment where students thrive, ensuring their happiness, health, and well-rounded development. So if you look on the scorecard, section blue, Priority Three, we see quality service and impactful engagement. So I'm going to go through the objectives, the strategic objective 3.1, which is parent satisfaction and engagement. We move on to the satisfac, uh, strategic actions. 3.1A, sustain the involvement of district-level committees to optimize face-to-face bi-directional communication channels. And then we would measure our progress measures to record such meetings that we are hosting and compassing agendas, attendance statistics, and feedback generated by these meetings. And then our final long-term measure would be our annual results of the, and having parent satisfaction surveys. So I'm just going to share that, but if you see, we also do one for, where we encourage our parents and student involvement. And kind of just to, I was thinking, well, Dr. Samora was asking the question, this encompasses the student service component of our, of our departments, right? So how do we do the parental engagement? And we also have 3.2, where we do non-parental community engagement. What other agencies do we provide services for our students? Any questions?
What was that last statement you said?
If you look at 3.2?
Mm-hmm.
It's for non-parent communication and satisfaction. Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know what the statewide statistics right now, and I think when Dr. Gilchrist was here the first night, I think he shared that statewide, 73% of taxpayers in the district, in the state are not parents. And so this concept of engaging non-parent community members, I thought was a really good, we were just talking about that, and it's like-
Right.
-that needs to be an objective.
Right.
Because we've got to keep that group engaged, not only the parents. Parents first, I get that.
Right.
But we've got to keep the non-parent community.
It's also what TEA also uses as a domain to actually give us a rating. And so what record do we have of community engagement, parent engagement, non-parent community engagement, our local businesses, colleges, universities, and also other partner agencies, fire departments and police departments, how we get them involved?
Yeah, and you, you've really opened the door with these strategies. Again, they're going to be perfected over time. We're starting it tonight, but actually, Mr. President, you started it with the SWOT analysis that we wrote out on the dry erase board. That's when this started. Now I hope you can see that we're getting lines coming, and we heard that loud and clear.
Right.
I hope you're seeing reflection of the board's, that night you were reflecting to us what you hear in the community. And then our, our role was to try to design strategy around that. So last but not least, certainly is the guy that we hate when he says no to us, Mr. Garza, with Priority Four and financial.
And I think that's why they have it color-coded in green, is that correct?
It matches his department.
Good evening, Board President, members of the board.
You just need a green tie. You just need a green tie.
And Superintendent Mr. Gonzalez, Priority Four reflects effective and efficient district and campus operations. Of course, that's the last page, and it's all in green, that's our Priority P4. This means that the district and campus operations are successful in achieving the district's intended goals and objectives. We are ensuring that the education and services provided meet the desired standards. In essence, we are strategically allocating resources. We want to carry out the operations with minimal waste of resources and emphasize the importance of optimizing processes and workflows to maximize productivity. The essential goal is to ensure that both administration and the campuses work cohesively and productively to provide students with the best possible educational experience while also using resources efficiently and effectively. And my example is going through 4.1, transparent, efficient, and effective budget development and management processes. This district likes to be transparent, as we've proven in our audit. It's always been available to the, on the website and for anybody to see and request for it, it's online. If we go across the board there on 4.1A, we would be creating, our strategic action would be creating a quarterly report on budget to actual comparison, and we can do it by funding sources, Mr. Dr. Samora was alluding to earlier. And our progress measures would be by preparing quarterly reports on budget to action, actual comparison. And on 4.1, our long-term measures would be that our campuses and departments will utilize at least 75% of the allotted funds by the third quarter reporting, meaning that we do emphasize for them to start spending their money early in the, in the school year, so that way they can use it during that same fiscal year. So by the third quarter, they should be three-quarters of the way done. And that's, any questions on this one, on my take on the example of 4.1? Thank you.
Yeah, I want to point out, and thank you, Mr. Garza, the, I love your 4.2 and your 4.3, and a lot of good conversation, but 4.2, and I know you all know this, but the finance department actually, you know, has a very small budget. If you just look at the budget of the finance department, that there, your financial health and your financial data is only as good as all the budget managers that are out there, right? So this strategic action is actually to build a cohort of budget managers and, and basically build their strength. So it's principals, and it's directors of this department or the other. We're trying to build the financial strength of all of them. And then I think that no one on the trustees would disagree that a long-range, comprehensive long-range quality, comprehensive long-range facility plan, you know, is something that we should always have ready at any time. That, that, you know, to me, that addresses growth, but it also addresses your existing staff, or I'm sorry, your existing facilities, you know, the status of your existing facilities. I worked in two fast-growth districts, it was hard not to get completely focused on just the new campus, you know, like the new shiny campus. The last thing we want to do is forget about the existing campuses. So, Mr. Superintendent and Mr. President, I think that just gave you a good cross-section, and we're open to questions.
I, I wanted to reiterate something, I think we had a question that I think Mr. Munoz answered very well, what is the difference? And I think Dr. Samora's question was key, is we've always benefited from a strategic plan in the district. Every district has to have one, it's a requirement at TEA. And what we're trying to do is to, what we're working towards is to have a reporting mechanism to this board, which means the results get reported to the board, it gets reported to the cabinet. We take those results on a weekly, monthly, quarterly basis, and we initiate our clinical supervisions, our administration strategies. supervisions, our administration strategies, and it, that's what, that's why we're results-oriented. So it's taking these results, reporting back to the board, getting the board engaged in the process of school improvement, which also is another TEA requirement, right? And in recent years, TEA didn't require a board to be involved in the academic outcomes domain as much as they do now. Now it's a requirement of boards. Part of your fiduciary responsibility includes academic outcomes and ensuring that these outcomes are actually happening, present participle. And so this scorecard is developed and specifically so that our weekly reports to this board and our monthly board meetings require us as an administration to report back to the board based on these domains.
Yes, and I, that's a really good, there's two, three things that I really like about what you said. So it's meeting some of the requirements, if not all, but we're integrating it into this board's plan. So this, this is La Jolla's plan. It's going to be different. That's one thing. And then a second thing that's really important that the superintendent just mentioned, is this isn't a strategic plan that's going to be a poster on the wall back there behind you. It's a living, breathing, dynamic, ever-changing document over time. I think that's really, really important.
Right, so as Dr. Samora mentioned, we need an emphasis on student services for this area. That automatically gets intrasaded into this plan as a board request, because this is a board-driven, you know, administrative-driven plan. It's a team effort. So at a spontaneous board meeting, where any of the board members have a suggestion or something we should do different administratively, it gets implemented right into this plan and done across the district.
In real practical terms, you know, I, I had the good fortune of working with the district that we stayed at this for 12 years, you know, and we just saw what 12 years could look like. One of the, you know, the brightest moments to me was when two board members were at a board meeting, and one is saying, wait a minute, are we talking about 3.1 or are we talking about 1.2? You know, and it, and it's just like, yes, like, because it was confusing. Like, which one are we talking about? 3.1 or 1.2? And the other board member said, oh, 1.2, sorry. Well, as soon as he said 1.2, oh, okay, all right, now we understand what you're, but we just get that comfortable, like, this is 1.1, this is 1.2, this is 1.3. That's our language. Anywhere you go in the district, that's our language.
Right, and Dr. Gibson, maybe you don't know this, but we're actually preparing accountability posters, right, that, that are going to be actually almost prompts for every administrator, any teacher, parent counselor, any board member in our boardroom. We're going to refresh our accountability posters. Within one of those posters will be our domains. So it becomes easy that this is our first, second, or third, or fourth domain that we carry out with our plan, that will be aligned to our district goals that you all will be establishing and adopting.
I think that's fantastic. So it's from the boardroom to the classroom?
To the classroom.
We're looking at the same goals. Mr. President, tab three in here, I never want to leave without leaving you homework, so tab three.
Before you give us the homework, can I just make a couple of comments? And maybe I missed it, I scanned through the plan. Do we have anything that we'll address in the area of transportation? Because I know that that's one area with, that we're faced with because of the size of the district and all. Just like we're dealing with long-range plans for facilities, that perhaps we can look at transportation and how that operates.
Yeah, you, so I, when, when I hear that, and there's two, Dr. Samora, there's two things that come to mind, and I'm, thank you for, I was about to not mention something, and I need to mention it. But I would think in Priority Four with effective and efficient operations, you know, we're going to see it as a part of that. And then I want, this is like next step, but the next concept is for there to be a cascaded scorecard. Now, that's probably a year from now. So like, don't, everybody think it's next week. But then the transportation department has a scorecard. Campus A has a scorecard. Campus B has a scorecard. It's the same belief, mission, and vision. It's the same column one and column two. Everybody is to follow the district scorecard, but now the transportation department has gone through an exercise, once we get comfortable with this, of how do we support 1.1, transportation department? How do we support 1.2? How do we support 1.3, if that makes sense? And I was a little worried about that in a previous district, and then it's funny that you bring up transportation. Their, their cascaded scorecard in my previous district was one of the best scorecards that we had, on-time delivery, like, they were just tracking.
Yeah. Now that you've said on-time delivery, that's my next one. And that has to do with the area of maintenance, perhaps operations, with just a matter of work orders and our response time to work orders.
Right.
To where people are submitting work orders, and how long is it taking for us to respond, and are we responding?
Yes, sir. I, I would think that that safely falls under 4.1, transparent, effective, and efficient budget development and management processes. I think that's comfortable.
But I think that that, that would help, be helpful.
Right. No, I, I will assure you that maybe at the district level, definitely at the cascaded level, that will be part of 4.1. Like, that's what 4.1 is. How effective and how efficient are we? The thing is, so here's what Dr. Samora's bringing up, that if, when we start saying we're going to measure, how do we know if we're efficient? How do we know if we're effective? Work order systems is a really good way to do that. So it just, all of a sudden, it becomes the tool that we're using. And I'm not saying that we're ready for that today.
No, but I'm thinking.
Over time.
Over time, yes.
The key is that we're saying, you know, I walk into my cabinet as a superintendent in another district, and how are we doing? We're doing great. Okay, am I just going to accept that? We're doing great. Seven thumbs up. Or, let's look at the data. You know, like, let's, let's start tracking data, and let's start looking at it. You're, you're building a culture of, let's look at the data. You know, let's see, let's see how we're doing. Mr. President, that tab three is a pre-read for the concept of when the reports are happening. These are like good questions that the trustees can ask, and, you know, I'll, I've been watching the Attorney General trial all day. I'll reserve my time for when I come back, but I thought that would be a good pre-read for the board to, you know, think about these questions, and then we'll talk about that the next time. So in summary, I might ask trustees, do you go back to tab one? I know we went through the rest of the booklet, and thank you for assembling this, that's helpful, and I'm going to throw my file away now, and I'm just keeping this from this point on. But as far as what the board is potentially going to adopt, Mr. President, do you want to just, like, what's the comfort level later this month, or wait until we hear from Dr. King, and then, you know, think about it in October? Mr. Gonzalez, what are you thinking?
I think it'd be good to listen to the presentation of Dr. King, and then from there we can start working and making sure that we adopt it. Any, any feedback that any, that any board member might have? I'd like to consider it and see any changes that need to be made. But I think for the most part, we're, we're ready to go, it's just.
Pretty, pretty close.
Yeah, we're almost there.
Yep. That's, 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 I just wanted to confirm that it feels pretty close right now, and that's a good feeling. Knowing that those strategic actions are going to be changing from now on, we're going to get them better and better and better. Thank you for letting me be here.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. King.
Thank you, sir.
Anything else? And with that being said, I need a motion to adjourn.
So who?
I have a motion by Dr. Benavides. I need a second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Olise. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Also opposed. Meeting is adjourned at 7:18.